Supposedly they have told the 30th of August to make sure they have them done. We are having a few more dog complaints here and there, but... I did send you a report on one.
I got that. Incidentally, on the dog's report thing, that involved the same people as from two or three months ago.
Were they that long ago?
Yeah, it was unfortunately. There'd been too much going on. But I have no details on the two or three months ago thing. Maybe you could come up with some facts so I know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, it wasn't mine. I don't have much.
I know that, but we have this problem that I'm not supposed to talk to the chief, and it was the chief's ticket, and he gave me nothing. So see if you can find out something.
I'll do that.
The fireworks, Jerry, what is that? Just the fireworks? Is it after hours?
The fireworks, basically, calls we had gotten after hours, and they were supposed to quit at 10:00. Some of the calls we had got had gotten toward like 10:01, 10:03. They're not real close.
Some of the fireworks in my neighborhood were shaking away.
What time is that?
It wasn't after hours. It was regular hours because literally shaking. It made us jump.
You know, it's as good a time as any. When you bring that up, we've got a fireworks ordinance on the board. And the existing fireworks ordinance still has a 50-milligram of powder limit. There's no way in the world all these aerial bombs are conforming to that old limit. And nobody is intending to enforce them, I don't think. The draft that I've got with me says the fireworks have to be legal in Nebraska. I mean, to get away from that 50 limit. Because our existing ordinance says a 50-milligram limit and no wires on a bottle rocket and no this and no that. That's stuff from 15, 20 years ago, but I don't think anybody hopes to observe it anymore. So if it's okay with everybody when we get to it, the existing... I changed the hours, the way it was discussed, but I changed it to fireworks must be legal in Nebraska essentially. Because saying what we're gonna do with those little tiny limits is not gonna happen.
Well, the ones that were in my neighborhood, I found three of them in my yard. And the sticks on them were at least as big as this pin, square sticks. And the top was like this big. I meant to bring them, but they got rained on and they fell apart. But the top parts that exploded were like this big, and they were like that big or anything.
Kansas City fireworks.
They were huge, and I found them in my yard.
The problem is the fire marshal's regs now, even in Nebraska, are like 12 pages long. It's just, how do you expect any of that to be enforced?
Yeah, I know.
Almost unintelligible.
It's hard to deal with that. Yeah, it was definitely a wake-up.
Do you have any questions?
I don't think so.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Economic Development, Susan?
I still haven't heard about our housing grant, but I did get a little more information. Apparently, it's pretty competitive this year, and the DED is re-reviewing their priorities before they make their final announcement. So hopefully, before I see you guys again, I have something about it, some information about it. We did get reimbursed on that Laura Elkhorn Energy Grant for the sand volleyball court. There's a CBBG Disaster Recovery Block Grant. I think I talked to you guys a little bit about it last month. We have some more information on that now. So this is a grant that the state is putting out to all the communities and counties. All of the money, your 12.5% share, the match that you had to come up with for any FEMA project that happened during the flood of last year, is reimbursable. So working with the county on $700,000, I'm working with Osman on theirs and Pierce. So Plainview has some cost share that you had to put up for FEMA projects. You can get that reimbursed. The application deadline is December 31st. So they haven't put out the full guidelines yet, but we're kind of expecting a fall application for that. But that's money back. I would definitely encourage you guys to go after that. We're working with Sandy. She's our new FEMA rep up in Wayne on the other community, so we'd like to add you guys if we could. Priority is for projects that are already completed or projects that are obligated, not yet done. But new projects that you just dream up, those are gonna be kind of the last priority. So something to consider. Let me know if you're interested. On COVID-19, we have been really successful helping a majority of our business owners with the variety of grant programs that have been out there. But we did get stats back on just the Paycheck Protection Program. On the low end, the Pierce County businesses received $8.6 million, and on the high end, we received $12.9. In Plainview, 69 businesses were awarded up to $150,000 for a total of $1.3 million. We had one applicant between $150,000 and $350,000, an applicant between $350,000 and $1 million, and that was actually the Plainview Manor. And then we also had an applicant between $1 and $2 million at Husker Ag. So we did pretty well on saving our payroll throughout COVID-19. And then the Nebraska Stabilization Grow Grants, the money for that, a number of our business owners have been informed that they received that $12,000 grant. It will come out at the end of August. Plainview Economic Development on some new businesses. We did close on a loan, well, we're almost closed on a loan for Plainview 247 Fitness. That's a transition from Jamie Stark and Brett Klossin to Brandon Meyer. And the new business openings, we have Annette Alt State Farm, Tranquil Spaces Counseling. Annette Alt is next to the Plainview News, and Tranquil Spaces is in with Dr. Mary Doherty. Let's see. On our Pierce County Disaster Housing Fund, this was the $500,000 we received last year to help businesses or homeowners that had been affected by the flood. Since the DED took so long getting us our money, we've actually been able to change our plan. We can now use that as owner-occupied rehab. So we can assist any homeowner in Pierce County, including the rural area. As long as you own your home, you can receive up to $25,000 to repair your home. So you just need to contact me. I will get you in contact with our housing representative at ENED, who's handling that grant for us. And we do have actually quite a few in Plainview that are doing it. That additional $50,000 grant that I wrote in March to cover the match makes that program free for any homeowner that uses it, so there's no cost share to that. On the downtown revitalization, we will actually have a draft of our final plan tomorrow from Confluence. So we'll go ahead and email that out, and you guys can take a peek. Let me know if there's any changes or additions you'd like to make, but we're kind of hoping to have that wrapped up by the end of August so we can go for that September application of $450,000 so we can actually start the work. Plainview Business Chamber, we did hold a ribbon cutting for Brighton Marrette on July 24th. She has Dance Bright, and if you haven't seen it yet, it's beautiful what they did with that building. On Pierce County Economic Development, our RFI fellows, Marie and Judith, have completed their internship with us. You saw the number of videos that came out, the promotional videos. And the last piece of their project, our e-commerce website, piercecountyshopperylive.com is finally live. So we can host up to 200 business owners across Pierce County on our website. It's free. They can feature up to 50 products. So with a virtual store, you're always open. If you're a restaurant, you can do online ordering. You can sell gift cards or gift certificates. If you're a service business, you can advertise your business, have a section for someone to inquire about your services, or make an appointment. And if you are retail, you can sell whatever you want. Organizations can use it, like boosters can sell T-shirts or spirit wear, and chambers can sell memberships. There's a number of different ways that people can use the site. So it's piercecountyshopperylive.com, and we are currently registering business owners.
Did you go to the website, Susan, to register?
Yep. Go to piercecountyshopperylive/vendor-registration. And on grants, we did get a Siren Grant for Pierce Fire and Rescue for $30,220. This is for respirators, air purified masks. And we are waiting to hear on the AFG grants that were written for the Plainview Fire Department and the Pierce Fire Department. We're kind of hoping we know something within the next 30 days. For Plainview Fire Department, that was $187,000 for new SCBA gear. Questions? Yeah?
Is there any monies available? We had our meeting last night, and it's brought to our attention, a house recently sold for $2,000. In reality, it should just go bye-bye.
Okay.
Are there any monies available to buy properties like that, to get rid of them?
Yes. Typically, we could actually use our LB-840 funding for that, but we're a little low in that. But that's what that CDA board that we created last year is designed to do. They should be able to get together and be able to use LB-840 money to purchase properties like that, to tear them down.
Would there be $2,500?
Yeah.
I mean, we were just talking, you know, if we could get above $2,000, then the guy would take more than the...
Yeah.
And then we could just get rid of it, because it's...
Because I think we get, what, $3,600 every month? So there would be... But the teardown is the expense.
Yeah, yeah.
That's right. But at least you'd have ownership of it, so you could control the future of it. But yeah, we could do that.
I can talk to you more about it.
Yeah. Fill out a apply-up for the application.
You've got empty one across the street. Has a four sales sign on it.
Can you see it?
Okay. Well, and we did receive a donation. I don't know if Dennis Johnson has dropped it off yet, but the now-defunct Plainview Community Club, or is it Plainview Pride? Plainview Pride? Dennis called us, said they wanted to donate $5,000 because they wanted us to acquire...
De-funct is cruel.
Well...
Still out there.
Dissolved? I don't know.
Not dissolved.
It sounded like you were giving money away to get...
Still fully active.
Okay.
Nobody's contributing anymore, so it seemed like we might just proceed to empty out the fund and consider dissolving it.
Okay.
It hasn't happened yet.
But the intention with the money, they would like us to acquire a property on the east end of town. I believe it's the old Mary's Lot with all of the underground storage, well, potential storage tanks. We're not sure if they're there or not. Dennis thought he maybe knew someone who would know the answer to that question, and I haven't heard that from him, but that was the purpose of that. I believe it's owned by the Henry family now, and the last I heard, they wanted about $14,000 for the property.
Well, except they would like to be reimbursed for the paving assessments, which they also paid, which is another 17 or 18. And as far as the cleanup of the tanks goes, the state has been in now on that property with an environmental cleanup grant, freebie operation. And they drilled holes all over, and they are proceeding to take care of whatever needs to be taken care of. I don't know the details, but it's supposed to be all taken care of, which will eliminate that big worry of anybody buying that privately, that the tanks are a problem. So I think, you know, they've tested whatever they're gonna test, and they're proceeding with remediation.
Okay.
So that's supposed to take care of itself at no cost, we'll see. And then that would be a property that'd be good for the city to control instead of letting it sit there.
It is a prime location. And Black Hills Energy did look at that site when they came out before they built their new location on Ninth Street. They weren't interested in that, but the fact that there was maybe tanks under there steered them away from that particular piece of property, so that'd be good.
So who received the donation then? What entity did?
Plainview Economic Development, I guess. City? I haven't got anything yet, but...
Well, we've talked... Plainview Pride passed a motion to contribute toward the project if it became a project.
Oh, okay. Dennis made it sound like he was sending a check our way, but that was what it was intended for.
Well, it's gotta come together.
All right. Anything else?
City, Kurt's going?
I'll talk to Kurt. Kurt was actually busy doing some concrete down here, so we just used him today. You have his report here. I guess if there's any questions, you can ask about him. He's busy doing obviously the concrete down there. He's driving around the school. Doing busy, so...
I told him yesterday the food truck guy had just mentioned about that tree, and I noticed that they went to farmer's market, and he said he would put it on his list just to trim it just a little higher above the sidewalk. That's the only thing I had, and I told him that yesterday when I saw him, but he was pretty hot and tired after pouring concrete. Number five, discussion-action, LB-840 signed grant recommendations. Dance Bright, $1,000, and Priority Family Medicine, $389.48.
Yeah, that was pretty straightforward. Both signs are already up, so you can see those.
They were very nice sized.
Yeah, they do look nice. So all the authority committee did meet, and they just recommended approval, so it's in front of you now for final blessing.
I'll make a motion to approve the signed grant recommendations for Dance Bright for $1,000 and Priority Family Medicine, $389.48. What about LB-40?
I'll second that.
Pam? Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries. You're very welcome. Number six, discussion-action, resolution number 605, Mean Resolution Management Committee.
This is just simply just to state that I can represent the city in any mean actions, meetings, and take a vote on their behalf. And then Kurt will be represented as well, so an alternate if I can't make it. And then on the sheet, you also see the NMPP, which was already... That's already done just by title, so... But just the top one that we actually got the vote on.
Motion to pass resolution 605.
Second. Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number seven, yeah, number seven, discussion-action, resolution number 606, Series 2015 Library Bond Refinance. That's what we talked about last month.
Yep.
Say it was about $50,000 in the long run, roughly?
It looks like when he sent me the final, it's $51,000. So just passed the resolution and ordinance to get it going for them to refinance those bonds for us. Brad had asked, he said he was gonna try and come tonight, but he was at another meeting, and so he kind of sent a little packet for you guys to read through if you have any questions on that, but this is kind of the first step to get that refinanced.
And those of you, if you haven't seen one of these happen before, excuse me. The bond companies watch these things, and if they see a window for significant savings over the term of a bond, and they get their fee paid as part of the rebuy, well, then they propose that you go ahead and refinance. And basically, it's just pull the old bonds, sell new bonds at a much lower rate, and everything goes on its way. They get paid, but they did good. And then we get a substantial break on that interest rate.
Absolutely. So the first one's for the resolution.
I'm gonna make a motion to pass resolution 606.
Second.
I'll second.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number eight, discussion-action ordinance number 957 for the library bond refinance.
Pass ordinance 957.
Pam? Second. Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion passes on first reading.
Did they provide you with a format for that? Sometimes they want the first, second, third reading.
Yeah, I have it.
Right away.
They gave it to me. It should be. Is it not in there? I don't know if I gave it.
I don't have it open right now. Well, you certainly need to proceed to wave the second, third reading after. Sometimes they want that thrown in first.
I know John Treisik used to do that with the streets.
Yeah. Check their form anyway before you do the motion.
Make a motion, wave the second, third.
Check. Check and make sure.
They do have in here that it's moved, that the required reading on three different days be suspended in his...
That's what I thought.
In his motion. He printed it off for me.
That's what I thought it said.
Okay. Yeah, take the motion to do it.
I'll make the motion to suspend the second, third readings on ordinance 957.
Okay, second. Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number nine, discussion-action ordinance number 958, update to fireworks hours in city limits.
Okay, that's coming down. I saw it. I picked this up, and you'll see right quick, there's a typo in the caption. There's an M that should be an N, N. But I did change the lead-in paragraph in this ordinance. Anything current Nebraska law, state farm marshal regulations. Our previous definition was longer and had a lot of detail in it, but like I said earlier, I don't think it cuts it anymore. But then it changes the hours from 8:00 to 12:00 midnight on the 4th, as you discussed. All other days, 12:00 to 10:30. This would just amend and replace the old ordinance.
Got extra Bruce.
I'm gonna have to reprint it anyway. Got one? Give us a call in the morning for a reminder, but Heather can run one of those clean for you. We had a lot of stuff going off this afternoon. Well, as with any ordinance, you need a motion on the basic ordinance and then wave second and third if you want to... Fourth of July next year is a long ways away, but you can wave second, third whenever you want.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 958, update to fireworks hours in city limits.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion passes on first reading.
I'll also make a motion to bypass the second, third readings on ordinance 958.
Second.
I'll second that.
Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion passes on second and third readings. Number 10, discussion-action, updates on nuisance properties. 406 North Fourth Street, resolution number 607.
So these are all the ones that we talked about last night? So I can make the extra copies, but...
Brought mine from last night.
Yeah, you have the blanks, remember. Courtney made the notes with the details of what you were discussing for a motion.
So 607 was Steve Klossin's property, which you guys stated by the 30th of September, all the things that were listed were to be removed from the property. And I had given you guys the letter and everything last night, so you guys all know what was to be removed.
I'll give Tyler this for your information. All four of them was... Two were present and two were absent, but we gave them all till September 30th. If... Or that was a recommendation from last night to tonight. Just need a motion.
We do them all together?
What's that?
We do them all together or separate?
Separate. They'll be better, just because they're different numbers.
Will you just pick a motion to pass resolution 607?
Yep.
I'll make that motion, pass resolution 607.
Second.
Second's out.
Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion carries. 212 North Plum, resolution 608.
Make a motion to pass resolutions number 608.
Second. Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. 305 North Fourth, resolution 609.
Make a motion to pass resolution number 609.
Second. Bob? Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. And 306 North Fifth Street, resolution number 610.
I'll make a motion to pass resolution number 610.
Okay, second.
I'll second.
Okay, Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next one, number 11, discussion-action, health board recommendation nuisance properties. 207 South King, 209 South King, and 107 West Locust. Meeting was held on Monday, July 27th. Can we have the minutes in front of you? It was recommended to start the process and send letters to all property owners to start cleanup and/or request a hearing.
Please make a motion, Ryan. I'll make a motion to send letters to clean up the properties on 207 South King, 209 South King, and 107 West Locust.
Okay, second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number 12, discussion-action, zoning board recommendations for building permits. First one's at 202 North Ninth Street Carport. I drove around yesterday and looked at all of those. That was Stan Evans, and he was outside, so I visited with him. It'll be behind his chouse now, and he's got a pontoon boat he wants to protect. And these were all recommended approval by the zoning boards.
I'll make a motion to pass a building permit for 202 North Ninth Street Carport.
Okay, second.
Second.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries. This one's 202 North Sixth Street for a storage building. That's the old Henry Stark House across from where Brian Bowman lives.
I'll make a motion to pass a building permit for 202 North Sixth Street Storage Building.
Okay, second.
Second.
Ty, I'll give it to Pam. Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next one is 610 Northwest Street. It's two permits, a storage building behind and a garage addition there. As you know, when houses were built, vehicles get bigger, and their vehicle that they had won't fit in the current garage, so they just want to extend it to the east a little bit. There's a beautiful blueprint on here from their contractor. You saw that.
We can do them together, Brian, or...
Yeah, they zoning board passed them together, so...
I'll make a motion to pass the building permit for 610 Northwest Street for a storage building and a garage addition.
Okay, second. Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And finally, 701 West Woodland. This gentleman, he had to come three times with the permit, but he finally got everything covered, and the zoning board recommended on the third trust for a garage.
Yeah, that's one. He was just under a misunderstanding of where he had to be. I talked with him, and so did Bruce, and all he had to do was move his garage back four foot off of where he set it at to be the five-foot standard, so he meant that.
This is that one. It's a street that some people think is an alley or where... I don't even know where Doug Pinkelman and Harold Mock, it's on the north side, yeah. So it's a pretty narrow street to begin with.
You look at the measurements, to call the thing a garage is a bit conservative.
Right.
Pretty good-sized building.
It is.
And he did agree to come within the specs anyway.
And he was supposed to get his neighbor's approval or talk to him and let him know what he was doing.
Well, he said he did that, but we had a little discussion about whether that mattered.
Well...
At least he moved it.
Right.
He meets setbacks now.
He meets the setbacks, too.
I'll make a motion to pass the building permits for 701 West Woodland for a 46-by-8 eighty garage.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye. Motion carries.
Number 13, discussion-action, approval of contract for city administrator, Jeremy Tark.
Okay, so...
Go ahead. We got three or four things to talk about here.
Yep.
But the items that I had recommendations on, Jeremy still wanted to debate some of them. One of them, I indulged his last suggestion a little bit and made a potential reprint. So the red line that you've got, the packet, is the old one. Here's a clean one.
I gave a whole new one.
Yeah, we got them.
And I hashed it.
You got Jeremy's. You don't have mine, do you, or do you? I put a note on the front of mine that this is the reprint of mine. Well, I'm just trying to get this clear. But handle's round anyway.
Okay.
Is there one for the media?
I sent it out special.
Thank you.
So to try and make this as confusing as possible, we've got my first draft, which now we're gonna throw away. This is my, well, my third draft. And then in the current distributed packet that Courtney put on the table for you is Jeremy's draft. And then in the current distributed packet that Courtney put on the table for you is Jeremy's draft. And they've highlighted on Jeremy's draft the discussion points.
Yeah, that we have amongst each other.
Yeah.
To try and make it easier for us, so the highlight areas were the differences from what we have.
I mean, in, in short, I had left the thing at one year with the possibility of two years renewals. That's on the front page. And Jeremy is still thinking he would like it to run to September of twenty-three. There is a piece under severance pay where I had suggested there be an exception for termination for cause. I think Jeremy looked at the personnel manual and there is a long list in there, about thirty picky little things. Well, I tried to avoid that in my last run with a sentence that says it would only be according, termination for cause would only be according to the most serious part of the personnel manual. But we'll discuss them one at a time and try and make that clear.
I actually have that in this draft too, mine, I agree to that part.
Oh, you did? You thought that was okay?
Yep.
Because there was this, you know, it was, my, my argument was, or my suggestion to him was, "Well, if you're fired because you made a bad problem, then you shouldn't get a whole bunch of termination pay." And he was making the suggestion, "Well, there's a whole bunch of little problems in there that really don't cut it." So I backed it off to major problem felony or crime involving the city, and that you were okay with.
Oh, yeah, yep.
Okay, good.
Yeah, there was a lot of pace up in there where if you felt like he might have been rude, it was ripe for termination.
Yeah, some, some of that was a little weird.
That was in there, so.
Yeah, it was, well, it was grounds for a letter or something, but we, I agree, it didn't make sense that it should be grounds to be fired.
So, yeah.
And then there's, there's discussion at the end. I think there's the, the three-year thing at the beginning. And the who approves the work schedule at the end. I still had it down in city council. Jeremy had changed it back to mayor. Those are the main things, right?
I think the mayor, that's just more state statute, because he's in charge of obviously the appointments and personally, that's how I feel about that.
Well, I, that's for the council's call. I mean, I, my thought was, you're dealing with a new employee. Normally, a new employee has probation time or something. To say that there should be a three-year contract right up front seemed a bit of a stretch to me. I don't think many employers would do that. And separately, the business of the, the, uh, the termination and the full-time. The full-time requirement, well, we waived by the termination now. The full-time requirement is just, if you're not gonna have plain to be your sole and only job, then who's gonna give you permission to go ahead and do other stuff? And I had it in there that that would require action by the council. Jeremy has suggested it should require action by the mayor. I don't know, that's your call, but you've got to decide what position you want to take and he's got to decide if he'll put up with it. The three-year thing, now I mentioned in the last note that I sent to Jeremy, well, you've got the right to terminate at any time. So to say that it's three years is a little fuzzy anyway. And I didn't, like I said, I didn't create the form, but in a sense if you...
I'm only going down to two years too, it's not like it's...
Yeah, in a sense if you can...
I don't plan on having issues here, but...
Yeah.
The two that we got tonight when we got here, they were, you handed them out?
No, I handed one with the highlight.
Highlight.
And that's just, I took what we talked about, his red line, but then those were still the differences between them.
Okay.
It was just the highlight areas.
Well, and now, if you're saying you're gonna take it back to two years, that's...
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy with that, I'm not gonna say...
That's fine too.
Did you see that one?
Uh, I just got it.
Just, just like, okay.
But as long as we've come around to an understanding that there can still be termination for cause.
Right.
Well, then that seems to work.
Right.
Yeah, so I, I put, well, you can see where I highlighted that, yeah, and serious items, that's part of the point, the manual, section X, whatever you...
Article eight, number four.
And that matches what he handed out.
Oh, perfect, okay.
Yep.
I guess I was doing them not page by page, you know?
So it's section fourteen and fifteen is the last cause for concern then. And you'll see in that, in that thing I gave you, it talks about schedule will only be, will be approved by and only modified by the council, and he's got it by the mayor. I don't know, I guess I don't understand why that's such a concern, if full-time is full-time, but do you have in mind to do other full-time work somewhere else?
No, no, you mean for hours of work?
Yeah.
Well, let's say if we put in fifty-some hours and I take off for my kids' deal and somebody doesn't like it, how would I get approval from the council? I don't have a meeting, I don't have, you just can't create a meeting and the mayor's there, I mean...
Yeah, you have vacation time, you have personal time, you can do as you please for a lot of that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm ready at full-time, I'm not worried about it. You're the one that wanted the council in there.
Well, I, your form said you would set your own schedule, and I changed it to subject to approval of the council.
Yep.
Now you've changed it back to subject to approval by the mayor. I mean, I, I would think the schedule would be eight to five, or whatever full-time is, what you guys want it to be.
We had discussed in the interview, like, say, not just council meetings, but the board meetings, like, say he goes to the zoning board meeting that lasts an hour, so like, if his daughter had a dance recital from three to four, he would leave, you know, because he'd made up for it by going to the zoning board meeting at night.
Well, maybe you've got a better understanding of that than I do, because I didn't come to those meetings.
As long as he quits in forty hours a week is what the main concern is, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, it's not like a, yeah, twenty hours, I'm gone for the week kind of thing, no, it's more of a flexible, full-time.
Yeah, I'd say I don't wanna say it's, it's not like a floating PTO or nothing, it's just, you may, maybe you work twelve hours today, so you're only gonna work how many tomorrow, you know?
The one thing I don't like about that by the mayor is, um, I think it should be the council.
Yeah.
Because, well, if you guys have a thing going, you know, like, you guys are best buddies and...
Oh, no, I, I don't understand.
No, no, no. Brian lets you do every, we got no control over it, but I think we should have control. I also think that, you know, if you wanna do something like that, you could run it through Brian. And if he okay's it and we got a problem with it, we can talk about it.
Right.
You know, but I still think it should be ultimately the councils say, I'm gonna get...
No, I don't have a problem with that. The only thing, like I said, is, you know, if something comes up, are you gonna email everybody or call everybody?
No, I'm saying you should do it.
No, no, that's what I mean, yeah.
You know, if we don't agree, we'll talk about it.
Right.
But we should ultimately have the final say.
Sure.
I'm not saying Brian shouldn't.
No, I don't have a problem.
Say, okay, and most of the time you'll be doing it. I just think more people should be involved.
Right.
Can you make them altered by mayor and council?
So in that section fourteen, hours of work?
Well, I've got a, a copy with all the red removed, which may be the one you could use for the final edit. But if you're gonna change the front page back to twenty-two, September of twenty-two, I mean, that's an easy fix. And then in fourteen, right now, what's in the signable copy that I have, if I can peel one out of here, is... Sorry, turn the page.
And honestly, I'm not really too worried about it. I don't plan on not working my time, so it's...
Yeah, I know, you don't. Yeah, I mean, it says, "Employees shall be allowed to establish an appropriate full-time work schedule." Subject to approval by city, of city council. And then in fifteen says, "Employment provided shall be employee's sole employment requiring full-time." And that's the, that's the signable draft, if you want that, or otherwise you see Jeremy's highlighted language.
For, for outside activities, I just said sole full-time employment, any other employment must be approved by the mayor. And that is, if people wanna get nitpicky, which sometimes years down the road they do, what if I have a farmer who wants me to help haul corn for the weekend? Why am I, am I employed now? Am I taking another job? You know, people, people foresee things differently, or, you know, or if I, you know, something like that. That's why I wanted to add that little in there, so I can say, hey, Mr. Mayor, you know, can I haul corns, you know, whatever like that? If that were to be, you know, come up, I'm not saying I have that, but... Yeah, it doesn't really matter, my work, but the way you had it, the way you had it, I couldn't do anything else, I might have interrupted my work or not, so...
Well, just full-time, I mean, if you put in your forty-hour week and do the meetings.
Well, yeah.
That is full-time. You can certainly do what you do in evenings and weekends. How about some kind of a combination language, "Schedule may be altered by the mayor, subject to approval of the council." Short-term, you could have the mayor take care of it, the council could come back and vote on it, like approving an appointment or something like that? Combine your sentence and mine?
Wouldn't there be situations where he would approve it, he would do it, and then the council would come back later and have to post?
Short-term, the mayor would get to decide, and that would be good for that, but if it didn't get approved, it wouldn't happen again.
At the point.
I, I'm still, I, I can, I thought the state statute says the mayor's in charge of all appointed officials and things like that for that reason, because of, there's a lack between meetings and one person be able to do that. And like I said, I don't plan on going and having a second full-time job, I don't want that, but I just didn't want there to be, oh, I see Jeremy helping out, you know, and then they look at his contract and say...
In a general sense, I agree with that, but your paragraph here, it's your paragraph, I didn't put this together this way. You know, "Employees shall be allowed to establish an appropriate full-time equivalent work schedule." I mean, in theory, based on that, you could say, okay, I'm gonna work six to four, three days a week, and all day Saturday and all day Sunday. And that's a full-time equivalent, and I don't think the city council would approve of that.
I'm sorry, I thought we were on section fifteen. I, I was down to section already. Sorry, I thought we were talking about outside activities, is why I brought up. Sorry, I'm worn out, ready.
They both refer to the same kind of thing.
Yeah, I, I'm okay if you guys wanna do it for the mayor and then the council for the hours of work, I'm not worried about not working. So I'm happy with that, I was just talking about...
You're suggesting is use, use my draft for fourteen and yours for fifteen?
Um, let's see, here's fourteen. Was this the current one? So...
Just for a little context, this seems a little bit more detailed than anything Holton had. Did Holton ever have anything like this?
No, he asked for one a number of times and it was always declined to do it.
He got one.
I thought he...
He got one in December.
Or the end?
Yep.
Yeah, the last year he was here at legal.
He got one in December.
That was fairly short though, if I remember correctly, was it not?
He was close to this.
Was it?
Definitely.
Um, yeah, so if we, yeah, for fourteen, it's scheduled by the mayor and approved by the council, I'm happy with that, that's on me. And fifteen, I, I, I still think fifteen should stay as is, just because, I mean, I feel like there's too much of a lag time in there between if something does happen, but...
Well, I, I mean, the council passes whatever they want. I, like I said, I don't do policy, but I think you need to have a fair presentation. But if you do that with fourteen, you've at least got a voice in what the full-time schedule is.
Right.
That's all I was getting to.
True, I agree.
Bruce, you said a couple of things that, that Tar brought this to you. Did he bring you...
The original form was his draft from some city administrator website.
Other, yeah, other city administrator, I, I talked to a couple of them and I, we collaborated. A lot of them have the same template, I guess you wanna say, through their NCMA, or, yeah.
This still seems fairly different than what Holton had though.
No.
I mean, is it close from a legal standpoint or no?
It's significantly different. It's got a lot of stuff in it that wasn't in Holton's contract.
Courtney just said it wasn't different, so was it...
Well, she said the general, the general content was the same, but it's got a lot of stuff in it that wasn't in Holton's contract. And I've tried to work around it here, because that's what Jeremy brought to the table, but we didn't start with the city's form, we started with this one.
Well, I was asked to bring one to the city.
Can you change on section three? We get paid semi-monthly, not bi-weekly.
I saw that and I ignored it, I think. That, that's what you do, it's a better way to put that, yeah.
So other than that, we can, let's go over it one more time, just for my draft. I prefer you use my draft, I got it on there, but, so section one, term one, we'll say, change twenty-three to twenty-two. Um, I guess, this is section ten, I agree with him on the serious items, so that's not an issue. Um, section fourteen, hours of work, scheduled by, altered by mayor and approved by council, is what, is that correct? Okay, and then I would still like to keep outside activities as I have, just for the lag in time, but, so, because there's a...
I think that makes sense.
Okay, I'm satisfied with that.
Is the city council okay with the compensation? I see that he's getting a raise of ten thousand dollars within the first year. Was that discussed before, or?
In the interview, yes.
In the interview it was discussed?
That was discussed at some meeting he was hired at.
What, was that after the interview then, or what meeting? Is that a, a public meeting, or was it a personnel committee meeting, or?
City council meeting.
Was it?
Brooke was here for that one?
Yeah, Brooke, I was going, that's why I'm asking, I didn't know.
Oh, yeah, because it's just a personnel and then the...
One other thing that concerned me along that line, I guess, just to be sure, I, you got discussed, I didn't attend those meetings, I don't think it's my, my place to be in all those type of negotiations. But the original advertising required a bachelor's degree in business or public administration and experience in management and finance. I mean, that was decided to let that go, that, is that so? Is, is that all there now?
What?
A bachelor's degree in business or public administration?
Nope, I didn't have a bachelor's.
I mean, didn't we turn down people because they didn't meet that spec? I mean, it kinda goes to Eric's, goes to Eric's question about the amount of pay, but...
Well, what was Holton getting paid when he left?
Sixty-six, did he start at that?
Sixty-six.
He was getting paid sixty-six when he left?
Mm-hmm.
And you just decided to waive the rest of those requirements, I mean...
That's the only one that he doesn't have, is the, I understand he's a few classes away from getting it, and he's gonna get it.
Okay.
Did it say anything about a master's in there? I thought it said something.
No, no.
No, just bachelor's degree. Well, in any event, the question tonight is the terms of the contract, it sounds like we're there.
So do we need to have a clean one, or is it clean enough?
Well, that's entirely up to you. I think you have a clear understanding, we can reprint tomorrow and get it down Courtney. I think Jeremy, Jeremy and I have an understanding whether you guys know where we're at.
All right, all right. Just to clarify, are you okay with what we just did?
Yeah, I, I stayed there, I thought we agreed on.
And you're okay?
I just question whether the personnel board after the raises over the three months.
Yes.
Recommended by the, the board, is, I don't see that.
It was in the personnel meeting we had when we interviewed her after we offered the job.
Because I thought like the three months was...
I'm, I'm just wondering how...
It is, every three months.
And if the personnel board said okay, then the raises, but if they say, no, okay, and there would be no... But I don't see that.
I, I think a lot of people are gonna have a lot of questions about how you guys justify his salary based on level of experience and the qualifications.
I don't think so.
You don't think a lot of people would have a lot of questions that you're paying him over ten K?
They could have questions about anybody.
For having, and this is no disrespect.
You should have seen some of the people that put in for it, what they had on their resumes.
Well, one of the reasons why the council decided to continue the thing is because nobody on that list, except for the one guy that you were gonna make an offer to, had the qualifications. The guy that was, that you were going to make an offer to, I think, had his master's or had just newly gotten his master's, and he was asking for less than that.
He asked for sixty-five.
He was asking for less than that, is that correct?
Sixty-five, and he got sixty-six.
So it would be less? And then you're giving him a ten K raise over the next year over that?
Mm-hmm. That's what we agreed on.
Right, but how do you justify it?
He does his job. Those are each, every three months, he gets reviewed, and if things are good, he gets that money. And that's, that's the amount we agreed to pay him.
I, I, I'd understand if that's what a salary is, but as far as for the reasons for paying him that amount, it just seems like if he does his job, and why not pay him eighty-six, then if he does his job, you could pay him ninety-six.
And so, that's what we agreed on. I have no problem with it.
Didn't you talk about when we were interviewing, that one of the reasons you can't retain anybody in small towns because of poor wages?
That's correct.
Is that not the reason that you offered that?
That is the exact reason.
He's, he's a young guy, you know, he's a good, good man. The only thing he doesn't have is that degree, like I said.
But what does that say about Holton then? You're saying that he wasn't a good man, or that he wasn't doing his job, because...
The only, I like that.
That, I know you didn't say that, I'm saying that's...
No.
Slightly implied.
He got paid for his job performance, in my opinion.
But you're being, he hasn't had a job performance yet, and yet you're gonna pay him ten thousand over it.
Every three months, he gets reviewed.
I think a lot of people are gonna have a lot of questions aside.
No, that's fine, they can come and talk to me anytime, Bob.
Sure. Sure.
Everybody knows where I live, come on down.
We had a question back there.
Yeah.
Lynn, you were approved by the council, I believe, two meetings ago. I could be wrong, and that might've been the last one.
It was July.
Okay, the night I met you. First time I sit there, you're sitting over here, okay?
Yes.
Julie stated that, uh, to go ahead and approve the hire for you.
Okay.
Based on the salary that Holton was getting, and asked you if you had gotten your degree, you said, you said no, but you were pursuing that, correct?
Yep, that's, that's correct.
And you are currently yet pursuing that, you said fine.
I, I actually have some free classes, just because there's been going on, but yes, I can continue to pursue that, yes.
Okay, so that should answer the question on the education side of things. I guess I just wanted to make, bring that point in.
That's correct.
You're pursuing your bachelor's.
Yeah, I'm pursuing, yeah. And then as far as experience goes, um, I don't know if you were here, obviously, or not, but I actually came from a city quite larger than this, and I ran over a nine million dollar budget there, and six, and so I just wanna clarify that, I'm just not coming here from the streets.
I'm not saying you don't have any experience.
Well, you, I mean, you said I had to work with experience, but.
As a city administrator, you have to have your experience on your resume.
Yep, that's correct.
I think we need to remember that this is before my time. Didn't Holton start at thirty thousand, with maybe a bachelor's degree? So in ten years, he doubled his salary, but he also gained his additional degrees while he was working for the city, and that's how he ended at sixty-six. So we start Jeremy at a reasonable rate, maybe in ten years, he has a master's and PhD, too. I mean, I think we have to look at the time, when, you know.
What, we're looking at a situation right now, where we need to hire another, well, at least another city employee, and several good candidates have applied, according to what I talked to Kurt, and they look at the wages, and they just lack.
That's true.
So we can't even hire a city worker at the wages we're trying to pay.
Well, I know, yeah, and I know the city workers have had issues with that before.
Right.
But I mean, I mean, is Courtney getting paid enough, then?
I'm not talking about Courtney, we're talking about Jeremy.
I know, but that's gonna lead into discussion of, of the other city workers.
They're underpaid.
I mean, who knows?
I wouldn't expect to get a job and get paid where Courtney's getting paid.
Right. They're underpaid, Eric.
But she, right, they can make, I mean, and maybe rightfully so, that they, they could say that they are getting underpaid, and probably Holton is underpaid, too.
It's possible.
It's likely, I mean, if you're willing to pay.
Yeah.
A new person coming in.
That, there's more to that than saying that, but yeah.
Okay, so we're okay with the changes we've made to pass tonight?
I would think if you're gonna do it, take a motion to adopt the contract according to the final discussion, and Jeremy and I will try and get that printed up and signed.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the contract for Jeremy as city administrator, with the noted changes.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number fourteen, discussion action, community development block grant, nineteen dash PP dash zero one one, drawdown number three, twenty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars, added eight, ten of twenty-two.
Cole sent this to me late on Monday, but this is another drawdown for DTR grant, to send to Confluence, for, and I gave you guys everything that he sent to me. And then we are reimbursed for sixteen of that from the CDVG grant. So our match is the five thousand, four oh two, but I write the entire check to Confluence, and then we'll, they'll wire us the money back for the sixteen thousand. So you'll see on that, this spreadsheet right here, it shows what the funds, it shows what our match is, and then what the CDVG matches, and then what the total is. And we get that CDVG grant money back from the state. So that's an in and out, we're just paying for the match essentially. And that format that you're looking at, that spreadsheet that Courtney gave you, you wanna get very familiar with that, because as we go into the DTR project, every project that is done on every building, that is the format that's gonna come back, but, but at that time, we'll probably string two or three or four projects together, so you wanna make sure you understand how that sheet looks.
I was wondering this one, thirty-two?
This one, yeah. So this, this is what we have to match, this first column, this is what the CDVG pays us back, at sixteen to fifteen, but we pay the twenty-one thousand upfront, to Confluence.
I make the motion, pass the CDVG grant?
Second?
I'll say it.
Any further discussion? Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number fifteen, discussion budget, twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one, budget workshops.
Okay. First, we'll talk about when we want to have a workshop. Courtney and I were talking, and we were hoping, if everybody works in your schedule, on the twenty-sixth or the twenty-seventh. Six o'clock start, does that sound?
What day of the week is?
Um, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday.
I don't have my thing with me.
So that'll be.
We start at six, we buy y'all supper, so you're working the, skip supper, so.
August twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh.
Right.
Pick which one works best.
Bring my schedule.
No, we'll, we'll stay here till the end.
I don't even remember what the end.
You gonna do that here for later, or?
What time do you think, six?
Six, I'd like to start at six.
Just let me know, I'll do my best.
Do you have preference, Bob? Do you have preference on either day?
Twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, do you care?
Either one's good.
Um, I, I'm gonna see either one as well, at this point.
Well, I'm just talking to Julie, and if she doesn't care, we'll just, we'll just pick one. So probably the twenty-sixth, 'cause there was something happening. I'll talk to her, see if one day works better than the other, and we'll go from there. All right, and then the packet I gave you is not a full and complete budget by any means, this is a very rough, rough, rough draft. We've been working a lot on it, we've been busy, Courtney stuck a lot of time into it, I stuck a lot of time into it, we've talked to our auditor, we've had to make some changes in our actuals that weren't, that weren't in our last budget, so it's been difficult, to say the least. So we started with it, and we threw it out, started all over, we believe we've got a good budget, and essentially, we're, we're trying to stop the bleeding right now. So the big takeaway is we've simplified the budget, so these are pretty much our revenue accounts, for salaries, distribution-wise, and the way they go, we have, we took away the quarter, the half, and trying to make it easier for everybody to see what's there for accounting and everything. The administration one, that's just the first part, but they actually go in the general, so we're not even, that's just the expenditure on that, that'll go back into the tax of receiving and everything, so we're not prepared for that one yet. We can start with the water budget, this is the biggest issue of the budget, the needs of the water. I don't know if you guys heard Kurt last month, that we have one well of nitrate in it, it may be going too high, we only have two wells currently on our system that operate. So if you look down to the improvement section, there's a possible price of a well, so that makes it look real bad. We hope to have that not be the case, but it's stuck in there for those reasons, so that kinda alters the numbers in a, in a downward way. The second biggest problem, or actually probably the first biggest problem, is the rates of the budget. So if we wanna look at the water sales revenue of nineteen twenty budget, it says two sixty-one down there at the bottom of the paper, middle of the, two sixty-one, four twenty-five. Does anybody see that spot?
Page one, or?
Page one of the water.
See, Plaineview Water Department Fund, by the.
Yep, go down to revenues, go down to four fifty-five, water sales.
Yep.
Two sixty-one, four twenty-five is not conceivable, it will never happen, we are a hundred thousand dollars below that.
And that was even after our three-year step.
Uh, yeah, and that's, that's last year's budget, even before, so essentially, this budget was ballooned out to be a hundred thousand dollars better than what it ever will be. So we're gonna have to readjust water rates and relook at it, and I've actually talked to a guy about relooking and evaluating our rates, the same guy did it before, just with more appropriate numbers, so we'll revisit that when it comes along.
It's funny, it was last weekend, somebody asked us, or asked me about the water and sewer and trash, and I told him what we paid, and how citizens were upset, and I'm like, I'd love to move to your town and pay what we're paying for water, sewer and trash.
I think our average water for service charge, we're like seven dollars below average in our, 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 our revenue showing.
Yeah.
So, just for a fun tip, I really wasn't going to this, but since I'm here now, last two years, our water has lost over a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars worth of revenue reserves, so we are depleting it in a hurry. So that's, that's the fun tip that I want, we're gonna look into and get more. Other than that, you guys will have time to look through this, like I said, you'll, the salaries have changed around the distant locations, and then the increase is, yes, there is increases in salaries, because we do believe that we're much lower than what we need to be, we are short-staffed. And other than that, we will get the tax-receiving entities completed by the time our budget hearing starts, and hopefully by then, we'll have all of our, all of our budget complete, and we'll have the auditor look over it once before our workshop. I mean, if there's any questions throughout the next two weeks before the workshop, please call me, ask me, that goes for anybody that wants to, Courtney and I are usually in the office, so we're here to help and make everybody understand what we believe is right.
Did you guys get away from the zero base?
Yes, we're not zero-based, yeah, and that's why, that's why you see a lot of alterations and a lot of differences in different categories, and yes, we don't, we don't operate on a zero-based budget. But our, our main goal is this year, we're, we're still projected to, well, with revenues coming in, we're through a rough number of just what was, just in these, these numbers. Last year, out of the accounts you have in front of you, the last two years, we've, we've spent two hundred and sixty-five thousand roughly out of reserves, these accounts in front of you, so our goal essentially is just, like I said, to stop the bleeding, so that'll be our main, our main focus.
Can I ask you a question? Is it the same auditor as Mike had, Helfel?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Because Mike gave us the impression that this is how the auditor wanted it, but it's not exactly.
No, your budget status, your choice, essentially, I mean, the auditor's there to help you on your own.
You do it, then he approves it, or says no?
Well, he basically, when Auburn says, yes, it, it'll pass, it passes the state, the state will say it's an okay budget, but it's, it's easier for us if you say, I'm not splitting somebody out of four departments.
It was very confusing, it's very confusing.
So we're able to simplify that, so people can understand it better. Yeah, and like I said, the auditors are like Courtney said, does it, does it meet XYZ to the state? Yes, it does. Is it, is it your choice, you wanna draw three hundred thousand dollars out of reserve in the next two years? That's, that's a council decision.
Right.
I mean, the council approves, if that's what they wanna do with the city's reserves, that's, that's not the auditor's decision to say it's bad or not, so.
Thanks.
I do remember the auditor saying every year that his auditing, like Holton's.
Yeah.
Way of doing things was, uh.
Trying to figure it out.
Not, not, it was okay, it was legal, I guess, accepted by most, most, most other cities don't do it like that.
So we're, we're kinda going through what, kinda what Mike had before, but probably when it comes to next year, it'll be completely different.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to make his theory work for our way of doing things, so.
In terms of, maybe that's not the right word, Dave. Um, number, do you wanna do eighteen, nineteen first, or how do you, or who added the sixteen, seventeen, so?
Yeah, we can do the other ones first.
Number eighteen, city attorney comments?
The only thing I had, sorry, separate from what's been gone over, if you recall, at the end of the meeting, or close to the end of the meeting, I was, I should check up on what's going on with the sex offender enforcement. I finally got a call back from Trooper Rose, Courtney gave me his name, and he was good enough to call back and tell me what's going on, and he looked over the material he received from Plaineview, but came to the conclusion that there were no state laws involved that they would get involved with. I mean, the state law says the city can make requirements on where sex offenders live, and how they maintain their residence, and where they maintain their residence, but the state law does not dictate what those requirements are, so it just empowers the city to make the rules, and so there's really no state law on setback or where you live, they have to register, but that's it. And there's no county law, of course, at that level, so it's just the municipal law that could be enforced, as far as pushing on someone that is violating the setback requirement for their residence. So if you wanna look into that further, that's the way we have to look into it, it has to be a municipal enforcement. And I looked at it briefly, he said he studied it three or four times for three or four different inquiries, and I think he's right.
Thank you. We'd have to amend our.
No, the, the city code is what it needs to be.
Okay.
It says what the setbacks are, I mean, whether or not we can prove the violations, we've got, Shelley Celine said she had evidence, I don't know that we have anything else official to prove that up, but if you wanna look into it further, that's what it would take.
Number nineteen, council comments?
Just wondering how the Hage property.
We're waiting on a waiver from the state, since we don't technically own that property, they have to give us a waiver to touch it, since there's asbestos in there, and that got sent off, what, two weeks ago? So we're just waiting on them, we have everything else pretty much lined up, ready to go, so.
So what is, it's a waiver to dispose of the asbestos with all the other debris? So our guys aren't gonna go in there, 'cause it's.
So it's separately.
Yeah, so our guys can't say, tear it apart, so we actually had to sign a special waiver to contain it all in one covered trailers, and then ship it down, so we're just waiting back on that, and they said it just takes time.
Okay.
Pam?
No, I was just wondering on the priority tubes.
Tyler?
Nope, I'm not.
Okay. Number sixteen, executive session, discussion on COVID-19 protocols, added eight, ten, twenty-two.
Okay, I guess I would have to ask, what justifies an executive session on COVID-19?
This is brought to you by our manager, and I guess wants to talk about how, when or if things happen, how they're going to, how we're gonna act upon it, so, we just don't wanna cause a big uproar of things on, we just wanna talk about how it's gonna be presented to, or how.
So you have information from the manager, and?
She will be on a conference call with us.
Okay.
So.
So if you're going to take a motion to go into executive session, then it would be for strategic planning and to avoid litigation, or something like that, relative to the manager's position on what's happening here, I mean, you gotta get something on the book to justify it to be executive session, so you would have to include that in your motion to go in.
Saying like you needless harm for an employee, or, or would it really affect?
Well, I don't know that.
Is that a stretch?
I have no idea.
I, I don't either.
I don't know what the facts are, but from what we know so far, you know, a strategic plan to avoid questions of the manager getting sued, or something like that, I think that's adequate to get you in.
Sure.
And discuss what you wanna do.
And obviously, when we come out, we have to report, or.
Well, if you have.
Possibly, possibly.
If you have any firm decisions or motions to make when you come out, you gotta do those when you're out.
Right.
I think she's more looking, and I mean, I'm not for sure what she's looking for, but I'm assuming this is more or less, when, if things, you know, things are getting closer, this is, she wants to make sure that we inform the council, the mayor, how things are done, how they're doing over there, and then how they want to present it to the public if and when things do happen in the right way, you know, just so we're not...
They have to follow state protocol on that. My dad's down in Northport, at one of the nursing homes down there. He's been in lockdown since March. And that's per state.
I don't think it's the function of the manager, I think it's, since they're a city entity, it's how they, like, publish it out, I think, is what they're looking for, it's not the functions of the manager. The manager, I'm sure, has to follow the regulations put out in front of them.
Well, I guess I don't understand what they're asking of the city.
The city's, the manager's entity of the city.
Okay, so their protocol, they're wanting what from us?
That's what they're, we're going to talk...
We're going to find out, we don't know, that's why we're doing it.
About, just how about, I mean, I can understand the confusion, just about how information's released, if somebody tests positive, or what? Can you get more specific at all?
I don't know until we have...
We're going to talk about that.
Okay, I assume you guys knew...
This is the first I saw, it was just tonight when I got here.
So, you guys don't know why you're going to an executive session, kind of? That's what it sounds like.
Just what Jeremy told me. It's at the request of Jolene Johnson.
Yes, this is just so Jolene, because they're an entity of the, manager's entity of the city.
No, yeah.
Yeah.
That part I understand, I just, did she, did she say why specifically she wanted an executive session?
Well, I don't think, I mean, I think she's going to probably tell us information and how to... It wouldn't make much sense if we discussed all of our strategies of how do you present information to the public, in and of the public.
What kind of information are you talking about, though? That's...
I don't, I'm not the manager, I don't.
Okay, I didn't know, it does talk to a lot of specific details about what kind of information it is, or who it concerns, or anything of that sort.
Well, I think that's true, and it is, you're staggering down that path. I mean, you are also tending toward protect reputation of individuals. I mean, they have the medical privacy issues. You know, I've been on the phone two or three times to the DHHS, and you can beat those people about the head and shoulders, and they won't tell you anything. So, I think maybe we've got a combination there. Avoid litigation for the city and protect the reputation of individuals.
But that seems like to be an assumption, and that Jolene wasn't very forthcoming about the type of information.
Well, if it proves that that's not the topic when they get into executive session, they're obligated to come back out and make it public. But that's the presumption going in, if that's what they've had suggested to them. Somebody's got to manage their way through that motion.
Can I ask three questions while you're thinking that?
Go ahead.
Is there, is there a protocol about not publishing all board meetings, like the park board and all of, I'm sure they're exciting meetings, but since they're probably, they're not published, or you don't get them, it's...
The minutes, or that they're being noticed?
The minutes from their meetings.
They give us the minutes, the city does.
But you don't publish?
Yes, we do.
The city?
No, the...
Boards.
Oh, the boards, no, probably not the boards, no.
But not the minutes.
Just the, yeah, it's the council, it's not the specific...
Why not?
We don't retrieve them, I mean, I don't think they send them, we don't request them either, as far as I know.
I, it's just a question, if it was supposed to be a public thing, and they have to have a notice, it seems like it's only logical to follow up on the minutes of the next time.
And maybe, and maybe if it's in the legal notice section, you pay for most, that's just pretty sensitive. The other part of it, too, is...
But they don't, city council doesn't pay, does the city council pay for their minutes?
Yeah.
Gee, no wonder you're concerned.
But in a lot, I mean, we posted there's going to be a meeting, and if you're interested, obviously, you're welcome to come, but they're not...
It's just a question, just curiously.
That was going to be my guess, it's just a cost, but that's only a guess.
The other thing, when we're talking about the drugs and everything, I think Elgin approved to buy a drug dog, is there a possibility of us sharing? Because I think to have a drug dog, you have to have a handler, you have to have somebody that knows what they're doing, you have to have law behind it, that all gets expensive. Is there a possibility of considering that in the future?
What I know about that is that it's the sheriff's office dog, she lives in Elgin, they had to get special permission from the city council, because the drug dog they bought is on the list of banned dogs in the city limits.
Correct, because that's the kind of offices are. What I'm saying is that they're expensive, and I can see use for them, but not necessarily expensive having our own.
That would be more at the county level.
Yeah.
Well...
But definitely, that would be awesome, Pierce County would...
Just consider.
Those would be brought in if you want.[1773.14]